This is a special meeting in lieu of tomorrow's canceled regular meeting for the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Kane on January third, two thousand twenty-two, nine AM Eastern Standard Time, whatever. And Happy New Year, everyone. Good to see everyone. Got through the weekend and off to a new year. So. First item on our agenda is the minutes, because this is a regular, a special meeting, we can't amend the agenda. But I'll talk about that later. First item on our agenda is the minutes from the regular meeting on December fourteenth and a special meeting on December twenty-second. Any comments or questions on the minutes?
None here.
Kathleen, all said, I move we approve the minutes of those two meetings. Second?
Second.
I've got. I'm going to abstain from the meeting of the fourteen. And I will approve the, the, the second meeting, that's out of the twenty-first, I guess.
For a second.
I wasn't at the, I wasn't there at the fourteen.
Right, correct. Okay, all in favor? Aye. We will.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Public comments, this is a hybrid meeting. Therefore, we will take comments from the public on the agenda topics scheduled for review or vote. And the comments should be emailed to B O S Distribution at canac t dot gov. And if we receive any, we'll read them in the course of the meeting before the end of the meeting. There's no members of the public here in person. So next item on our agenda, I'm very happy to have Cheryl join, join us to present a new Chief Financial Officer.
Good morning.
Morning Cheryl.
I am happy to be here to present Kelly Lenz. I believe you should have her resume in front of you. She is currently the CFO slash Treasurer for the Town of Wilton and the Board of Ed with Wilton. She has been with them since two thousand fifteen. She was also with the City of Bridgeport as a Finance Director, Tax Collector and Treasurer. And also with the Town of Stratford as the Treasurer Consultant. You can see from the resume, she has also had private experience. She does have her masters in over eighteen years of municipal experience, so. I highly recommend Anne. Kevin has met her. Members of the Audit Committee have met her and Lunda highly recommends her, so.
And I think Todd also, Todd LaVieira also.
Todd LaVieira also met her.
Yeah. So I'm thrilled. Anne is someone who we looked at before, and she's currently doing double duty at Wilton for the Board of Education and the town. And so I'm, I'm very, my friend, the first select woman in Wilton is unhappy to lose her. But we were unhappy to lose Lunda, so. I, I'm very pleased. Kathleen, I think you interviewed Anne before as well.
No, I don't recall doing that. I, I'm not sure. I mean, how many years ago?
I believe Kathleen, it was, it was maybe eight years ago. She was, had come through before C and D had come in.
Okay, okay. Then, then I'm looking forward to seeing her again. I don't, I don't recall meeting her before, but looking forward to it.
Anyway.
When does she start?
She will be starting January eighteenth. She has asked, and Kevin is more than happy to let her kind of help Wilton transition. So she will be working for both towns, probably for the first month.
Any questions?
Okay.
I mean, I think we're, we're lucky to get her. I mean, she's kind of hits the sweet spot for us with her.
Absolutely.
You know, being in Wilton and stuff. I think, I think it's particularly helpful that she's been doing both roles, even though she didn't want, she wants to kind of
Right.
trend away from that. But it gives us the opportunity to have a CFO who is intimately familiar with a Board of Education that's not, not dissimilar to ours.
Correct.
I think that's going to be really helpful going forward.
And she's a very pleasant person, someone who will get along well with the staff, so I think we, we're very fortunate to have this. Any further questions, Kathleen?
I'm just, I think, did she also meet with Bill Perret for the Audit Committee Chair?
He met with Bill and Chuck.
Jacobs.
Okay, great. Super, great.
Okay, I move we approve the request from me to hire Anne C. Kelly Lenz as Chief Financial Officer effective January, this is the twenty-fourth, isn't it the eighteenth?
She has put in to start on the eighteenth, so we're, we're going back and forth.
Right, anyway, mid-January. Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Us no.
Favor? Okay, and this is known already in Wilton, but we will publicize it locally. That brings us to a Fire Commission promotion, and the recent Mr. Jack Pointer is on for the Fire Commission.
Yes, good, good morning and Happy New Year and good evening to, to you and the Seychelles, but I am here representing the entire Fire Commission, and we're here to request your approval as the Board of Selectmen for the promotion of firefighter Michael Jackson to Lieutenant. Michael's been with us for about eight years and outstanding member of our department, truly deserving of this promotion, has worked very hard for it. And we look forward for his continued success, and we'd like to have your approval for that promotion. Thank you.
Yeah, we didn't.
Okay, thank you, Jack. Any questions?
None here.
None here.
I move we approve the request from the Fire Commission to promote Michael Jackson to the rank of Lieutenant. Do I have a second?
Second here.
For the discussion, all in favor? It's, aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye, unanimous. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Okay, have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to item number five. Full-time employee for the planning and zoning. Cheryl's own comes again.
Yes, I would like to present Sarah Carey to you. We had gone out, we had gotten close to fifteen applications. We did interview quite a few individuals. Sarah came right to the top. She is currently a zoning and wetland enforcement officer in Derby. She has been there for six months, very new in the field. She graduated from Virginia Tech at the top of her class with classes in G I S and land use planning. She is already registered for the Spring Casio class to get the certification she will need. And I would like to recommend her to start on January eighteenth.
Any questions?
Oh, good.
Who is joining?
Lynn, from Hawaii.
Oh, great.
Spanning the world today.
Can you hear us?
Just, I can.
So Lynn was part, Lynn interviewed her with me and Lynn would highly recommend her and would like to see her start.
Lynn, would you like to say anything?
Um, I think Cheryl covered it all. Thank you.
Very good, okay.
She had an impressive, impressive resume.
Any questions, Kathleen?
She does indeed. Just one, she's only been with Derby for six months. Is there a reason why she's making the jump so quickly?
It's a part-time position without benefits, so she has been looking to get into the field full-time and we were lucky to get her, so.
Great, okay, super, thanks.
I move we approve the request from the Director of Human Resources to hire Sarah Casey as the Assistant Zoning Inspector in Planning and Zoning effective January seventeenth or maybe eighteenth.
Yeah.
Whatever. Second?
Second.
Nick seconds for the discussion, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye, thank you. Tiger and Bill. Leak news on the inflation front, huh? Leak news on the inflation front.
Yeah, well, world's different, isn't it?
Yeah.
So, based on our new person policy you approved last year, we're just following the protocols in there and bringing to you the request for approval to increase some of our purchase orders to keep up with repairs. You have a spreadsheet outlining which ones they were, but this is pretty much standard that we've been done over the years, just in the past, we just, we will do through the Selectmen's Office. So now we're bringing it to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, questions for Bill?
Bill, can you just help me make sure that I understand how the spreadsheet? I'm just looking at one. I guess it's, should pick Garamella. So the ad we're putting in is twenty-five thousand, is that right? To the ten that we've already approved, how does that work?
Yeah, that's correct. So we already had the approval for ten, which we went through, we're asking for another twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
Typically with, it's one of those air conditioning, does heating, he does a lot of pumps, does a lot of, the maintenance on a lot of the buildings this way and the repairs. So it's not uncommon. Typically, we're spending anywhere fifty, sixty thousand a year in that type of service.
Okay, and then there's just another spreadsheet, another spreadsheet that actually kind of breaks down what those repairs are. Comes to about twenty-two thousand. So is there just a little bit more of a gap, or is this on top of that twenty-two thousand that we're, that they's already worked on?
No, well, this is above and beyond the ten thousand that was approved. This will be part of the twenty-five thousand, and it still is just a little bit of money in there for some future repairs. We still gotta go, we still have the air conditioning season coming up and everything, so we're, we're just gonna keep, if we have to, we'll just come back to you and just keep you informed of what's going on as we go forward.
Yep. Okay, great. Thanks for the explanation.
Any question?
Nah, that's fine.
I move we approve the request from Public Works to increase specified blanket purchase orders for building repair services and to approve contracts with vendors in conjunction with purchase orders. As, forth on our tablets, any, have a second?
Second here.
Nick seconds, further discussion? All in favor? Aye? I think.
Thank you.
Tiger, good morning Tiger, Happy New Year.
Morning Kathleen, Happy New Year.
Morning Tiger, thank you.
You're welcome. So this is sort of in keeping with what Bill was just discussing. We had, we had originally contracted with Greg Filacci to do some wall repair on Waveney Road, on a, Waveney along Lapham Road. He had given us a price of nine hundred dollars a day. We said Kevin signed an agreement for under ten thousand dollars, basically ten days worth of work, ninety-nine hundred bucks. And we wanted to see exactly how much work you would get done and quality of work. He had done great work in the past for the Land Trust and for Waveney Conservancy. We had partnered with them previously with having some interns come out. He did classes with them and then had them do some work. We said, let's continue to stretch a wall specifically along Lapham. And when I did a cost analysis, he's far exceeds what, or is far lower than what we, if we went out and bid it, you know, on a, for other masons to go and do the work, and this is basically is his forte. So what we'd like to do is continue this kind of work in ten thousand dollar increments and go forward. Now that we're past the ten thousand dollar mark, we gotta come to the Board of Selectmen and say, we'd like to kind of go forward with this work. And then chew away ten days at a time, eleven days at a time, and have him continue working, hopefully get all the way down Lapham Road. Working south and then turn back around and head north, basically finish up by the pool and get that entire stretch of wall.
So what's, what's the total spend?
Right now it's ten thousand dollars. He spent, we're looking at another ten, probably another twenty, you know, I think would be.
So it'll be forty all in?
Uh, maybe thirty to forty, yeah, to do that entire wall.
That's in the budget.
That's in the budget, that's correct. I have a fifty thousand dollar line item for wall repairs at Waveney. This is in keeping with it. It was just a question of, you know, once we exceeded the, the initial pilot project to see what it would do and how much it would, how much it would cost. To give you an idea, he's doing about thirty feet of wall a day, say, okay? If you incorporate the fact that the wall is two feet high, let's just use two feet for a nice nominal number, right? Two feet, one foot on top and two feet on the backside, you get paid for square foot of face. That's five feet for every linear foot. That'd be a hundred and fifty feet per linear for a day, okay? And then you say, normal mason is going to charge me anywhere from twenty-five to fifty for that square foot of face, right? So if you look at it, he's charging me nine hundred bucks. Anybody else would be charging me fifty times a hundred and fifty, a lot more, okay? So at that point in time, you're talking about seventy-five hundred dollars versus a thousand dollars, right? So for us, it's great work and it's at a very reasonable price, so we'd like to continue working forward with this, this arrangement. So that's it.
Good deal.
Tiger, yeah, sounds like a great deal. Tiger, is that cover all of the walls that we'd be interested in sort of?
I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to. I'd like to have him, you know, once he finishes, you know, the Waveney walls, then to look at other ones, there's a, we have a wall along Old Norwalk Road. Similar up on the curve, past the nursery school, as you come up towards Marshall Ridge on the right-hand side, that's all parkland, right? That's Coannis Park itself. That wall is in disrepair as well. So we're trying to hit, you know, Lapham Road is basically a gateway into town. Old Norwalk is a gateway into town. Any of those stone walls, let it seem repaired, and he's, he's the perfect person to go and do it. So that, that's, yes, I'd like to see, once we finish this work here at Waveney, being our primary, then to look at other ones throughout town that we own. You know, Kevin was asking us to basically cut back so we could see all the stone walls. Once we cut them back and looked at them, now we gotta actually repair them and make them look a little bit better, right?
Could Greg?
Sounds great.
Could Greg have our guys work with him to?
We can, yeah. We, we, you know, we supply the stone, we cut back this, you know, we, we prepare the area for him and then just supply the stones to him, and he just basically puts them in, so yeah. Like I said, we did have, we had some interns working with him in the, in the past, so we can certainly add one or two of our guys to go there and help him work and see if we can't hurry things along.
Since we don't snow.
Since we, this is four-letter word at this point in time, yes, but yes.
Okay, I move we approve the request from Public Works to continue a contract with Greg Filacci to continue the reconstruction and restoration of existing stone wall repair work in Waveney Park in increments of ten thousand dollars. So I'm not exactly sure what we're approving here.
Basically ten thousand, and then I would like to just have you be able to sign ten thousand dollar increments, if that's okay. Instead of coming back, I can come back, certainly come back every ten thousand, or I can have, you know, the thought was to say, yes, we'd like to go forward with this, and then I'll have Kevin, every ten thousand dollar increment, have Kevin sign it. If that's okay with the two of you. If it's not, I'll come back. I have no problem.
As long as we don't see the budget.
Have a cap.
What's that, Kathleen?
Can we cap it?
You can cap it.
Not exceed?
Yeah. Forty thousand.
Forty thousand, fine.
Yeah.
I'll cap it at forty, and then if we have to come back, I'll tell you what we're gonna do. Is that fair?
Okay.
Captain forty thousand dollars. That's the, that's the, the resolution. Do I have a second? Kathleen, do you want a second of that?
No, second, it's fine.
Cause of lag.
For, further discussion?
None here.
All in favor? Aye? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Tiger.
Thank you. And thank you for that, I appreciate that. Yeah, next is, so we received two petitions on Lakeview Avenue for and numerous calls over the years for the sidewalk extension on Lakeview Avenue from Millport to Main Street. Right now it's one stretch that's not, that's not connected. So we have the Millport housing area, we're redoing Canaan Parish, you have Avalon, and then you have East School, right? So you have all those areas trying to access Main Street. And Lakeview is a little windy. It's wide, but it's a little windy and, and it's not necessarily, people don't necessarily feel safe walking along the edge of it. It's part of the P O C D for two thousand and three and two thousand and fourteen, planning, construction, development, as far as sidewalk extension or an area of connectivity, we'll call it. It's not really an extension. So we went to Capazes De Angelis, who has done all of our previous survey and sidewalk design workforce. They've done an excellent job. They know exactly what we're looking for. They did Main Street itself and Old Norwalk Road, so it is kind of in keeping or a piece of it. And we requested a quote twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars to not only do conditional, a condition survey, but also a boundary survey, both sides of the road, and then develop the design. And then give us the plans, so we can go forward with a bid at that point in time. So we're looking for approval of twenty-nine thousand five hundred. The funds are currently available, and we'd like to move this project along.
Yeah, we really do need that. It's a missing link. I remember walking up from the Memorial Day Graveside Service and it struck me that, oh, we don't have a sidewalk here.
Why not? Right, why, why, why don't we? Right, at that point, why don't we? There is a small little piece in front of the, one of the condo complexes, and then that's it.
And that goes away.
Yes.
This is a good project.
Questions, Kathleen?
Tiger, is that gonna, yeah, is that gonna be on both sides of the street or, or just the southern side?
Uh, then, actually, we're looking at the northern side, to be honest. It looks like on the northern side. Yeah, the existing sidewalk, unfortunately, that small piece is on the southern side. We're looking, actually looking on the northern side. That'll encompass Greystone Circle, which is, and then Lakeview Lane, which is off of that side. There's no, there's no cul-de-sacs off of the, off of the southern side. So we're looking at the northern side at present, but he will be doing a boundary survey on both sides of the street, so that we can then see if we, if the design doesn't pan out well on the, on the northern side, we can look to the southern side.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I move that we approve the request from Public Works to enter into a contract with Capazes De Angelis for twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars for survey and design of the completion of sidewalks on Lakeview Avenue from Millport Avenue to Main Street. Second? Nick, second? Nick, Catherine, they both second? Further discussion, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tucker, we're increasing our IRS reimbursement rate from fifty-six cents to fifty-eight point five cent per mile effective January one. This is something we do annually because the IRS, I guess because of inflation increases these annual reimbursement amounts, so. Seems, seems un, 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 controversial. I move we approve the request to adjust the mileage reimbursement rate for town business effective January one from fifty-six to fifty-eight point five cents per mile in line with recent change announced by the Internal Revenue Service. Second? Second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
That's unanimous. Appointments and reappointments. The Parks and Recreation Commission, we are reappointing Gene Goodman, Jake Granito, Jack Hawkins and Francesca Segalas to three-year terms ending December one, two thousand twenty-four, and requesting the appointment of Keith Ritchie for the balance of a three-year term ending December's first, two thousand twenty-two. I think there was Laura Kostigan resigned from the commission, so I move we, we approve these reappointments and the appointment. Second?
Second here.
Second.
Thank you, Trace.
Just switch it back and forth.
Further discussion, all in favor? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Just wanted to thank everybody for
Yes.
For, for their service.
Absolutely.
Continuing service.
Absolutely.
Including Keith Ritchie, who spent how many years on?
Twenty years on Parkland, so. He's a tennis player and he's very interested in parks and recreation. So, and we have two or three more boards and commissions to finalize on the eighteenth of January.
And then when we, we, we'll be at full capacity.
Yeah.
Cause some, some years we've had, you know, not, not everybody.
Yeah, right, exactly. We have a couple vacancies, especially on health and human services. But also we, we will dissolve a couple committees. I think the Fields Committee and some other things are, are in need of dissolution. Even the Saks Building Committee is still not dissolved, so. That brings us to contracts under ten thousand dollars. Any questions? Comments? There's four or five contracts there.
I can't pull them up.
I just had one quick question for Tiger. The, the concrete project at Maine and Elm, can you just let us know what that is?
That's being reimbursed by Aquarian? They, no?
So, so at Maine and Elm, we had one handicap ramp that was, the concrete was spalling, often it was becoming a tripping hazard. So while the road was torn up and they were under construction for the water main, I got a price from Peter Lonnie to come in and do that handicap ramp and associated curbing on, on either end of that piece. So that, that was that part of the project. What Kevin was alluding to was, right, that's, it was during the water main work itself, they actually disturbed twenty-four pieces of sidewalk up and down the road. And Aquarian actually asked us for a price to do the work, and then they would reimburse us. And tried to get that added to this agenda. I couldn't because it was a special meeting, but that was fourteen thousand three hundred dollars from Peter Lonnie, being completely reimbursed by Aquarian for that work. Their contractor was leaving and their contractor does pipe work. They said, do you have a guy who comes in and does sidewalk work? I said, yes. So we had him start and finish. He's actually done with the work already because we were, we wanted it done before the holiday. But it just, in the, in the interim of trying to get the approval from Aquarian and then come to get approval for the Board of Selectmen, there was no opportunity at that point, but I have an email from Aquarian saying, one, requesting the price, two, saying they'll reimburse us, and then I talked to Kevin, Kevin said, yes, go ahead and do it, we'll just bring it to you. Unfortunately, this was a special meeting, I couldn't bring it to you.
Okay, that answer your question, Kathleen?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
None here.
Tax overpayments, there's one real estate, a couple vehicles? Any question about those? I move we approve the refunds on the tablets? I didn't get that.
Second.
Second, Kathleen's seconds for the discussion, all in favor of the tax overpayment refunds. That brings Selectmen's comments. I will just make a few comments here. One, as you know, we closed on two-twenty Elm Street on Thursday, and we will close in the next couple weeks with our condo purchasers. Very happy to get that done.
You know, you know, I don't, I don't think I've ever seen a first selectman work harder on any particular project. I really mean that. I mean, it's, I said earlier, this is a home run, but it's a home run because you really were working around the clock. As, you know, as a lawyer who deals with closings, it was gnarly, I think.
Gnarly. That's a good word for it, gnarly.
So, so thank you for your, your efforts.
Thank you, Nick. On the COVID front, obviously, we're in the middle of a wave of some kind. We had two hundred fifty cases for all of last week compared to two hundred fifty-five the prior week. We continue to see that the vast majority of the breakthrough cases are very mild. Cold, cold symptoms like enough, but I had a conversation this morning with Dr. Reed about Stanford Hospital. He said they were up to eighty hospitalizations. We don't know of any New Canaan residents being hospitalized, but we are no longer doing consent, contact tracing either in the Health Department or in the schools. And, but.
And that's because it's just, it's too wide, so widespread that it just becomes ridiculous.
It becomes ridiculous, right? We're most, we're focused on vaccinations, we're focused on booster shots. And as I mentioned earlier, we weren't able to add, amend the agenda, but we're in the process of transitioning our PCR testing at Irwin to a new, a new vendor, and we will approve that on the eighteenth. It'll take a couple weeks to transition. And that's what I had my discussion this morning with Jen and Dr. Reed, and we're very happy to be making a transition. I won't talk about it today, but we, we, we will go to Monday, Wednesday and Friday, and even possibly five days a week if the need is there. Because right now only Tuesday, Thursdays is probably not meeting the need, especially with the reduced quarantine time to five days. People need to be certain. We've had some difficulty getting results with the current vendor, and we need to improve that. Meanwhile, as we keep on saying in the weekly out calls, anyone who is symptomatic, the Health Department has rapid tests and is welcome to come if you are symptomatic. Schools opening today, did it open on time? I think that's a good sign that we're figuring out how to get through this. I will make a comment about the home test kit. I don't want to use the word fiasco, but it was kind of a bit of a fiasco last week. I think well-intentioned by the governor and the, and the state, and I think, but, you know, the initial rationale was that people were coming into the new new, new, New Year's weekend, you know, it'd be a good idea for people to be able to test. That rationale passed when the test kits didn't arrive. And therefore, we're, we're picking up our supply this morning of test kits. They, they did not decide to give a separate allocation for the schools as they had last week. And now they also want us to get them, give them to the daycare centers and the, so in addition to the first responders and, and I don't know, we're gonna have a meeting later this morning to decide whether we do any distribution to the public. Random testing doesn't seem to be a very wise plan. We'd rather be focused. in terms of people that would actually give us some results. The bad thing about home tests is there's no official reporting to the, to the state or to the Health Department. So it doesn't tell us much about what's going on, but I think given all the testing that we do and the Waviney Care Center does, although, although there are clearly more cases out there than the official state results, still, still makes more sense for us to focus on the schools, focus on the daycare centers, focus on first responders, focus on town employees and public works personnel that have to be available to man snowplows, that I think we need to be more focused. We'll, we'll announce our decision later today, but it doesn't seem to be very sensible to be distributing home test kits randomly, so. Then that brings me to, I think I mentioned previously that.
Kevin, just a quick.
Yeah.
Kevin, just a quick question. How, how many are we expecting or how many did we get for today from the state?
I forget the exact number. You know, we were, it bounced, bounced around on the weekend because they were going to give us single tests versus two, two, two tests in a kit and then they, you know, as of last week, we were going to have five, giving four kits to a family. It was going to be 500 families. I think, I think now we, they were going to give, anyway, I forget the exact number, Kathleen. Be happy to send it to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, as I mentioned previously, December 14th, we received notification of the beginning of a community consultation process on the 1837 Ponys Ridge cell tower. We are required to have a, a public information session by February 14th and I would plan to do that before the Board of Selectmen in late December, late, late January in the evening. We will invite our Planning and Zoning Commission members so if they wish to give input, they can. But the important thing about this tower is this really is a public safety tower. It gives us a permanent solution to having improved, permanent public safety communications for fire, police, EMS and I think even public works perhaps, but, so it's important we get that tower going and we'll, we will learn more from Homeland Towers, what the plan is. It's, we will put on the web, town website, the, the information they've already provided, which is quite thick, but we have a electronic version of it, so. I think that's all I have. Kathleen and Nick, give anything?
Um, just, just a couple of quick things. I'll just want to add my congratulations and thanks to you, Kevin, for the 220 Elm project. I know it took a lot of effort and you, it was a great close to what, 2021, so congratulations and thank you especially. I just, just curious, I don't know, what was the purpose for the date change and that we have a special meeting today versus tomorrow?
I'm scheduled to leave tomorrow. Like you, I'm going to.
Okay. Good for you. Okay, well, I think this is not a board resolution, but I think that, you know, it's maybe a New Year's resolution that we all work together to figure out, you know, what's, especially to accommodate, you know, the changes as best that it can be. So certainly happy to do that, to help for the change for tomorrow. So just want to make sure that we honor that going forward as well. And then the last thing I had in, just sort of following, and maybe this is for something to follow up when I get back, but the, this, obviously the news about the Maple Street Cemetery movement of gravestones, sort of mystery split rail fence, et cetera. So it just, it'd be interesting to, to follow up on that. I don't know if others are focusing on that. I don't know if Tiger is following up on that. I, I was part of an observing the work.
Yeah, Kathleen, I think that's got to be something, I got, I think that's something that the Historical Society has to follow up on. The town has no responsibility for that cemetery and we have no information as to what has transpired. So I would hope the Historical Society would, would look into that and because we, we have no information and I.
Well, I think it's worth, worth looking into, you know, whether it's the Historical Society or any other group. There was a collaborative group that worked on developing a sign that, you know, I think Tiger led and very amicably. And so anyway, this is just sort of further development on the Maple Street Cemetery. So I'll be interested in following up on that.
You want to follow up?
Good.
Okay, with that, I asked for a motion to adjourn and I wish everyone again, happy new year.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye.
Happy New Year.
Enjoy. Kathleen, thank you.
Yeah, enjoy, Kathleen.
Thank you, you too. Thank you. Bye-bye.